Good, good evening, William. Hi Cindy.
Hello, good evening.
William, how come you have to sign on twice? I'm just curious.
Hi Kathy, I'm here. I just have my video off for a minute.
It just says Village Planner. Okay, you guys should have your names there so people know.
Yes, yes.
As opposed to Village Planner.
Yes, I do forget to do that.
Get to know you. So you know how to change your names, right?
Yes.
Blue dots on the top of your upper right-hand corner, the blue dots with the three dots in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. You can change it.
I do, I do forget to do that, but thank you Kathy. I think one day I was Frank at everyone, I think it was the zoning board, last zoning board meeting, it was a little confusing.
Which wasn't so bad, you know? And then Lou, long gone lady, never did change his name, he was William all meeting.
Yeah.
Alright, we're guessing, who, wait, who's here? Do we have extra people here? No, wait one. Office CGA, is that you guys running this?
No, I don't know who Office CGA is.
I wish people would put their real names so we know who they are. It might be, I don't know, CGA, is that one of the consultants with the applicant?
I just allowed them to talk, so they should be able to unmute and comment if they have.
Hi, good evening, it's Rex Gedney, I'm just.
Oh hi Rex, okay.
I'm in my conference room, I'm normally on my laptop, but I'm.
Okay, if you want to change your name, because we see Office CGA, you can use the, if you take your mouse and put it to the upper right-hand corner.
It's currently recording, should I be recording?
With three buttons on it and you can. Your screen, okay.
Hold on.
So you have to record. I like how he walks through his background and comes up.
He should be showing up in.
Here's Kristi.
Okay, we're ready now for you.
Okay, we're calling this meeting to order, it's Thursday, different day for us, November 12th, some regularly scheduled meeting on the Village of American Planning Board. And we have three members present, which constitutes a quorum, but we need three votes to pass anything, so we've been through this before, we'll deliberate carefully. Okay, the first item on the agenda, or minutes from our July 22nd, 2020 meeting. Everyone has a copy of the minutes, and the only comment I have is that we're misusing the term excused instead of recused for Mr. Verney in one, two, three, four places.
I think that's. I think it's five places.
At the, not at the adjourned meeting, he wasn't recused from that, he was excused from that.
Oh, he had left that, okay, got it.
Right.
I just started X-ing out excuse, so.
Right, 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 so all during the discussions of Oriental Avenue, starting on page five, wherever there's a vote, Mr. Verney should be recused, not excused. But it continues on page six, there's three votes on page six, and then on page seven, the last vote is to adjourn the meeting, and he had left the meeting, and so at that point, he's excused. Okay, I think that's, I think that's clear. Anybody else have any other comments on this? And for tonight's meeting, by the way, Mr. Verney and Mr. Mendez are both absent. Anybody else have any comments? William, you're down, as will, are you a William or a Will? You're the attendance of the meeting.
As it relates to the minutes and so forth, it should be William.
William, so we'll correct that as well. I wanted to ask you that before I corrected it, I didn't want to assume. Okay, anybody else have anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll take a vote Cindy.
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us to an open public hearing. Before us, we have the application of, for a four-story multifamily dwelling with eight units, one of which will be affordable at 139 East Prospect Avenue. We opened this public hearing back in January and have been working on the application since, not continuously, but since when we last discussed this, we had one open item, and that was the landscape plan for landscaping in front of the building and on the roof garden. The applicant submitted a revised plan, which is dated October 26th, 2020. And so we have that new plan, and we have Ms. Oakley's response to that plan. Good evening, Ms. Motel.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Planning Board members, good to see you again. Kristen Motel here, on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight also is Rex Gedney, the project architect. As you summarize, Madam Chair, I believe the only open issue from our last appearance on October 14th was to address the comments in Ms. Oakley's memo. We were provided yesterday with a copy of an updated memo from Ms. Oakley, and I see that she's here tonight, so I'm certainly not going to speak for her. But based on our review of that memo, it seems like we addressed those concerns, and to the extent that there's some concern about the plant species on the front facade, the applicant would be willing to amend those species as a condition of approval tonight. And since there's nothing else outstanding to our knowledge, we would request that the board close the public hearing tonight, and I understand there is a draft resolution before you, we would respectfully request that you take action, given, I think we submitted just about 11 months ago for this project. We greatly appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Oakley, is there anything that you want to add to that?
It's a very good landscape plan for a first iteration, all the species are native. They've done a very good job of screening the non-mechanical vent that is in the front facade on the Prospect Avenue side with an Amalanker tree, which is beautiful in all different seasons. And then a combination of evergreen deciduous shrubs, perennials, and climbing vines. They've also proposed to cover the solid stone parts of the facade with a steel grid system that will enable Wisteria and a Clemidus to climb up the facade. So I applaud their attempt to make the front of the building look more interesting. My concern, which was mentioned, is that the north arrow indicator on the plan is incorrect, which may have been a cause for the plant selection not being ideal because the front facade faces north northwest. So many of those plants, and some of them are coniferous, which require full sun, so it's up to the board to decide whether they want the applicant to adjust those plants to be, so that we don't end up with a front facade with a lot of potential, and then have the plants not thrive. Maybe there can be something put in that if they do, they're replaced, or it's up to you whether you want to have them change that now. Regarding the roof plan, it's a variety of perennials, succulents, and grasses that are planted in graduating rows to screen the, I believe it's a four or five-foot surround around the mechanical equipment. So for those viewing the roof, whether they're residents or people driving by, walking by, it's a good screen for that, those mechanicals.
Okay, and what about people looking down on the roof, if they're above in an adjoining building?
There will be some screening because of the height of the, some of the plants closest to the surround, but not in the winter, because these are all perennials or low-lying ground cover. There is no cover over the mechanicals, I don't even know if that's possible.
Yeah, I didn't think that would. Something of some interest, at least, in the warmer weather. Does any member of the board have any questions for the applicant, or for our consultant Susan?
I just want to think of the most reasonable way to proceed with the the differentiation and the arrow indicator, and maybe the plant is not ideal for that. I don't think we want to go now and start specifying other plants. I would think, I don't know how we would word it, obviously they would have to keep up with the plantings and replace anything, so that if they wanted to go ahead and put in this, this particular species, then it would be replaced with something else that would thrive, that would be similar, if it didn't, if it didn't work out because of the lack of sun.
A number of these species are sun-loving plants. The junipers, for example, climbing height, the wisteria. Yeah, the carracks ground cover is fine with minimal sun, the Amalanker tree is going to be a little bit closer to the curb, so it will get more sun. So it's really the geranium juniper and wisteria, in my opinion, that are the most susceptible to not thriving because of lack of sun.
It just strikes me that it doesn't make any sense to prove plants that are going to fail. We should get it right now.
We could put something in the resolve clause, which we've done before, that the plantings are to be maintained, and if they fail, they need to be replaced with, or we can ask that they be replaced, you know? I mean, I don't think anybody wants to invest in putting in plants that aren't going to thrive, or aren't going to live.
That's correct, the applicant would understand, completely, we agree.
Right, so we could put something in here that, you know, the plantings need to be maintained. And that way, if they do fail, then they would have to put something in there that's going to, that would cover all our bases, as opposed to specifying specific plants. But we should give some flexibility also to allow them to amend to species that don't require full sun.
That makes the most sense now, rather than leaving it up in the air later.
That's a. Issues that we face on this, this is kind of not a big problem, not a big issue. Mr. Gedney?
Yes, good evening, Rex Gedney. If you could share my screen, I could pull up our planting screen. If you could share my screen, I could pull up our planting screen. I, I was, I saw Ms. Oakley's note about the north arrow, and I just wanted to share. I, I don't believe the north arrow is located here, and.
We can't see your screen.
Pardon me?
We can't see your screen.
Sorry, let's do this again.
Gedney, permission to share a screen? That would be William or Amber. Oh, I see William and Amber, yes. Bear with us.
Do you see this now?
Yes.
Okay, so this was the planning, revised planning plan that we did plant, submit to the board. Our project landscape architect, Sean Jansky, is highly qualified and very talented. The, the north arrow is indicated to, to areas. And it's located here, and the arrow is pointing north, which we believe is geographically north. So, I mean, it's a minor point with regard to the plant species. I, I'm sure they selected, and I'm not questioning. We're happy to make changes as seem suitable, but I believe that they made the selection that they feel is would, would grow and prosper here. So if we need to make substitutions, we can certainly do that. As you can see, the palette of planning is, we think will be very nice. So, and we want it to be. You can assure that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I've seen Sean's work numerous times in the past, and he, he is very talented. It was just, I, I wasn't suggesting that the plant should be changed. I just wanted to put it, let the, make the board aware of this fact. So we could, we could leave it, the judgment in their hands, that this is what they've decided, and if it doesn't work, then it needs to be changed.
So, I mean, I would, I would go in that direction, adding a third paragraph to the resolved section that the applicant is to maintain the plantings and replace any plantings as necessary. However, and we've worded this in the past, maybe, I don't, I don't know, Kristy, maybe you remember some wording we've used in the past that would be appropriate for this. I don't.
I don't, I think what you did was fine. I really.
Thank you.
You did a great job, Kathy. But really, I, I mean, I think it'll be easy to wordsmith it. And I think you were on the right track, so I think we just have to go down.
I mean, we might, you know, have different words, but that's the gist of what we're talking about here. Okay.
We can make non-substantive changes to the resolution, so if we have to maybe clarify the wording a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Gedney.
My pleasure.
Remove your, your screen sharing, so. See us all again. Here we are. Thank you. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other issues, questions to the board? We can do, go over the resolution after we hear from the public and then close the public hearing. Anybody else? No. Are there any members of the public present who wish to speak on this? Before, before that happens, I would like to just remind everyone that we've considered a lot of issues with regards to this project. The planning board must follow the law. We feel we've done that. We've heard from residents at almost every time we've had the applicant before us. We know that there are many people who feel they'd rather this project not be built. Unfortunately for them and for your feelings, I'm really sorry that it's within our zoning code. It's allowed by our code. We are the ones who are implementing the code with the applicant. We don't make the code, we just follow the law. So if anybody has any additional comments they want to make, we received two comments by mail, which we've addressed, and we will, will address in our comments on the resolution later, on the draft resolution later in the meeting. But if there's anybody who has anything to add at this point in time, please step forward and be heard. Let William or Amber know, whoever's managing this, raise your hand and we'll promote you so you can speak to the board.
Madam Chair, it doesn't appear that anyone wants to, wishes to speak.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, then I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Just you and me, Richard.
Nobody else.
Yes or no?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and I vote, I vote yes as well. The public hearing is now closed. We have before us a draft resolution. We do have some comments on this resolution that are substantive. We're going to move things around and clarify a couple of sentences. So we'll, we'll work through that in a, in a coherent fashion. Okay, and I'm going to turn the first one over to Ms. Sheen.
I hate to do this, but if you're considering comments on the resolution.
Public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Let's take that back.
Well, rewind the tape?
Yeah, rewind the tape.
All right, so even when members of the board make comments, it has to be during the actual public hearing process?
I mean, if you're going to be considering items that people have written in as to the resolution, then I would say that it's part of the, the public hearing.
Even though there are comments the board already made before we read what the public said?
Oh, oh, okay, if it's not, if you're not really commenting on what the public has said, and it's more your own.
They echoed some of the comments we had already had.
Then I think it's fine to keep it closed, if, but if it's something, it's like, we're going to go through those comments.
Oh, yeah, no, no. People caught things that we had already caught.
Okay, okay, that's fine then.
We're just going, we're just going through the resolution itself.
I thought we were going over their comments.
We did, we did review their comments while we were deliberating on the application and deliberating on the resolution. But before that, I had, I had read the resolution thoroughly and caught a couple of things. And Ms. Goldstein caught more. So we'll start with, we'll start with, I'll give her all the credit.
You think I'm going to get a raise out of this, don't you?
Double your salary.
So you want me to, so you want me to start?
No, I had started page one. You want, everybody want to number the whereas clauses because we're moving some around.
It's going to take too long, at least for me, so, well, let's see if we can stumble through it the way it is. I would propose that we, when, in the first whereas clause, when we're describing it as a four-story multifamily residential building with eight one-bedroom units, I would include also the language of which at least one fair and affordable housing unit. Just, just elaborate on the description more, because that's what's being built, and that's what's required to be built.
That's what's required, right?
Okay. So then on the third whereas clause, Mr. Tavolachi wasn't at the time then acting. I would just get rid of then. He was the acting building inspector in January of 2020.
Now he's the building inspector. I had that then.
Right, but I want to, I, I think we should refer to him as what he was at the time.
Okay.
Okay.
Take the then out.
Okay.
Please call me.
And then my thought was the last whereas clause at the bottom of the first page, and the first one at the top of the second page really belong further into the resolution, and I would suggest doing it somewhere, I would, I would move both of those whereas clauses to the fourth page, just one up from the last one. So I would insert those as the, I would leave the one whereas clause at the bottom of page four and put those other two just ahead of it. Because we can't really say that it's all kosher until we make the recitation that what we've done and what we looked at and what the law was. Does that make sense to anybody?
Yeah, but if, if I may, just to give you an understanding of why it was in that order. When staff drafted it, it says that it satisfies it, and it wouldn't. In my opinion, as your staff, I don't know that it would make your agenda if it didn't satisfy the requirements of a minimum of meeting the, the minimum requirements. So I think that's what, that was what I was trying to convey.
Oh, that it conforms with the regulations.
But it says, it is satisfied that the site plan will conform. Well, we, we have to go through the exercise. I, I, I don't know, it just seemed, it's not a fatal flaw, but it, it just seemed. We didn't make that determination. The building department made the determination that it was a complete application and would conform with the law. But I, I'm open to suggestions.
It changed the language. That's not, that's not difficult. We can change the language and move the paragraphs as you suggested.
Okay, I, I'd just be more comfortable with that because it seems like a conclusion before we've done anything. And then on page three.
We should number the pages in the future, by the way.
Yeah, that would probably be good. So on page three, I think in the next to the last whereas clause, where it recites all of the dates of the public hearing, I think we should note that the public hearing was closed on November 12th. If that's the logical place to put that. And then on.
No, wait, we have to finish that paragraph. There's extra words in there, and so they need more words to make it clear.
Well, that's on page four. I'm sorry, did I give you the wrong page number?
No. Paragraph you were just in by putting closed, but then it says, "At which time the opportunity for public comment was offered to all interested parties wishing to be heard were heard."
Okay, well, to, okay, wishing to be heard.
In before, after be heard and were heard.
And were heard.
Heard, and they were heard, and their comments were made part of the record if we want to have a complete thought there.
Yes, let's complete our thoughts. So then on page four, the first whereas clause, Mr. Cutler is now the former Village of America Director of Planning, but he was at the time the Director of Planning, so I would get rid of former. The third whereas clause, the date for November, I guess for Ms. Oakley's latest memo. I believe the date was November 5th. Is that right?
We didn't have that.
And then the seventh whereas clause on that page, dealing with the issue of the determination of the multiple dwellings law, I would propose we just take that out. We didn't determine anything.
I'd like to, I'd like to propose an alternative. The planning board invited Mr. Tavolachi to, to our meeting to discuss this because it came, it came up as an issue. And we actually also got a memo from our planner, who was an acting planner at the time. We had a planning consultant there, whether or not the law applied. And at that time, Mr. Tavolachi basically determined that the law didn't apply, and we voted and accepted his determination. So I would like to change that sentence to say, whereas on June 24th, 2020, the planning board accepted the building inspector's determination that Article III of the New York State Multiple Dwellings Law does not apply to this, to the project. As opposed to taking it out, because we spent a lot of time on that, and we did take a vote.
Right, we did.
I tried to vote to accept his determination.
Right. Because we have no authority to, to do, to do zoning.
Determine any compliance with zoning.
Not even sure I would say accept his determination.
Acknowledge?
Acknowledge is probably a better word.
Yeah, I, I was one of those two words.
Received his determination.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to make.
Heard his determination.
You just did hear it that night too, after.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you don't want to make it sound like you have discretion over it, so.
Yeah.
Right, and I don't, I don't think it was in writing. Is that correct? It was just verbal?
We made it verbally at the meeting.
Right. I like acknowledged. I think that's good if others agree. Are we on to the next?
Yes.
Okay, the next whereas clause, where we thoroughly reviewed the application for site plan approval and a special permit, as well as all of the documents I would get rid of the applicant has. I would say all the documents submitted in support of the application and the comments, reports, memorandum it has received. I just want to make it clear that other people, like consultants and whatever, ours and others have, have had information submitted. And then the next whereas clause, I think there are just a few extra words in that. "The proposed action conforms to the existing zoning and development pattern along East Prospect Avenue and the surrounding neighborhood." I would get rid of the next words, "The property conforms to the area's existing development pattern." I think we said that.
Yes, we done it.
And then I think it should be, "And there are no identified historic or archaeological resources." And then the only other thing I have is on the last page, the "Now therefore be it resolved." I would include that language talking about including at least one full and fair affordable housing unit, just to make that conform with the, the first page.
And we also talked about adding a third clause under the resolve with regards to maintaining the plantings.
We should probably develop standard language like the other two.
I think there is standard language. We just don't have it at our fingertips right now.
So that's all, that's all I had.
Done that before. Okay, that encompassed everything I had as well. Richard, do you have any additional comments? That was pretty.
No, no.
Always count on Cindy. All right, anybody else have any, any comments, anything to add to this?
I just, I just wanted to say, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm glad we took the time we did. I thank the applicant for their patience. But I think it was really important to especially deal with the, the concerns of the residents about the safety issue. I think the fire inspector and the fire department could, took a hard look at what this building will do in, in terms of impacting fire protection and the fact that they said it's actually better than current conditions. You know, gave, gave me some peace of mind with this, and I, and I hope the residents feel that as well. You know, that's obviously the most important thing that we have to think about. And I, I think, I think the extra time it took was, was worth it.
A lot of people don't realize that's the access to behind the stores on the Manning Avenue, that block where the firehouse used to be. You have to get behind to be able to access to fight fires. So not only the residents in the neighboring apartment building, but also the store owners and people living above the stores and whatnot. So, yeah, I, I would like to echo those sentiments and thank everybody involved and the cooperation of the applicant as well. I see we lost Ms. Motel. Do you have any comments or issues with the changes we just made in the resolution? They were fairly innocuous. Are you still here? Do you have anything I see in chat? Do you have any, any, because I know you reviewed the resolution and commented on it before we passed it. If you have any issues or comments on the resolution, that changes that we just were made on the fly here.
Madam Chair, just, just a quick, just a quick point of clarity. Are you in deliberations? And because if you are, then the question becomes, you know, are you able to hear from the applicant?
Hi, Madam Chair, I'm sorry I couldn't see you. I just got kicked down, so I couldn't.
Kristy shaking her head, no. Does that mean we're not allowed to speak to the applicant?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is if you have questions for the applicant, you're more than welcome to ask the applicant.
Okay. Okay, we just made a few. Okay, we just made a few changes here on the fly. I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with them. There's nothing major here.
Yes, the applicant agrees to the amendments that were made to the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else have any comments on this? No? All right, I need a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
So moved.
Gee, I think I'll second it.
I can say. I'll call the vote. Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, thank you, everyone. This brings us to the end of our agenda. As we slog through this pandemic, applications are getting fewer and fewer. But before I called to adjourn the meeting, I would like to, as I mentioned earlier, Lou Mendez is not here this evening. Changed the, changed the night of the meeting and made it a little more difficult for certain members to attend on a Thursday. But I would just like to officially recognize Lou's service as a planning board member. He served his two five-year terms. He's now term limited out. This would have been his last meeting, and he served 10 years on the planning board. And I I know, we're all shaking our heads. We're all relatively new at this. 10 years seems like a really long time. And we would just like to thank him for his service. And if he were here, we would give him a round of applause. We'll give him a round of applause anyway, and.
And it was, it was quite something sitting next to him.
Do you remember?
Public, public-minded guy.
My first year on the planning board, I sat next to him also, yes. Mr. Mendez was an enthusiastic member of the planning board and had opinions, which he wasn't hesitant to share, which is a good treat to have if you're on the planning board. So thank you, Lou. So now we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Gee, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Our next meeting isn't until Wednesday, December 9th. Is that the correct date? There's no meeting, the second meeting in November, so everyone, happy Thanksgiving. I hope you enjoy your Zoom Thanksgiving dinners, because I think that's what most of us will be doing. Stay safe, wear your mask, and we'll see you in December. Thank you very much.